Mr. President, Council members and participants, we are now live.
Thank you, and good morning. Before we begin the public hearing, I will make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19 and its variants, city council committees are currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make these remote hearings possible. Instructions for how the public may view and offer public testimony at public hearings of council committees are included in the public hearing notices that are published in the Daily News, The Inquirer, and Legal Intelligence prior to the hearing, and can also be found on council.com. I now note that the hour has come. Mr. Christmas, would you please call the role to take attendance, and members that aren't attending just say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Christmas, please call the role.
Council Lady Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and participants. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Council Lady Brooks. Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gaudier.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, in Philadelphia. Present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman O. Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Council Lady Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues in Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson. Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gill.
Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Council President. I'm present.
Good morning.
Council Lady Quinones Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. Present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to all. And we're going to get started. We have established our quorum. This is the public hearing. This is the public hearing of the Committee of Hold regarding Resolutions Number 220, 264, 220, 265, 220, 266, 220, 267, 220, 268, 220, 269, 220, 270, 220, 271, and 220, 272. Mr. Christmas, would you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution 220, 264, appointing Afrozah Hussein to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Resolution 220, 265, appointing Benjamin Lerner to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Resolution 220, 266, appointing Hakeem P. A. to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Resolution 220, 267, appointing Hassan Bennett to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Resolution 220, 268, appointing Jali Hatchett to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Resolution 220, 269, appointing John Solomon to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Resolution 220, 270, appointing Marielle Asaniago to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Resolution 220, 271, appointing Melanie DeBose to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. And 220, 272, appointing Rosara Torres Thomas to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
Thank you. Before we begin to hear testimony from the witnesses we have for today, everyone should, who has been invited to the meeting, should testify or should be aware that the public hearing is being reported. Because the hearing is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being reported. Additionally, prior to recognizing members for the questions or comments they have for the witnesses, I will note for the record, at this time, they will use the chat feature available on Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. At this time, I would like to recognize one of the prime sponsors of the bill. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for remark.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thank you again for being a leader who has moved us to this moment. I want to thank my colleagues for also being involved, committed, and insightful to us being at this moment. Just to give us a little bit of reflection, in 1993, then-mayor Ed Rendell created Philadelphia's first executive order for a police advisory committee. I emphasize the word advisory because it was not what we are dealing with today, which is an oversight committee. Due to police and community interactions that were negative, he determined that it was appropriate for us to try to take a stab at creating a fair process by which citizens could make complaints against serving police officers in the conduct of their duties. We need to note for the record that often that advisory committee was underfunded, understaffed, almost in a way that committed it to criticism and even failure. We then, due to your leadership, we wound up having that executive order continued during the Nutter administration. It was reinforced during the Kenny administration. Thanks to you, Mr. President, it, for the first time, had dedicated funding of a half million dollars. That sounds like a mere pittance because, quite frankly, it was. When we began the process of looking at what other cities had done, they looked and said, "How do you do that on that amount of money? When you have that large of a force, that many complaints, and those many investigations to have to deal with on a yearly basis." Council President Clark was not stifled there. He helped us move a ballot question that became a charter change, and a half million people agreed that there needed to be something more, and that we needed to have permanency. A permanency that did not depend on the whims of any administration, of any council, of any mayor. And we began that process. So here we are now. We committed and commissioned a selection panel of individuals who gave their time, their talent, to that process. I want to thank them. Samantha Williams, Esquire, who was my legislative director, was among them. Angelica Hendricks, who has become the chair of that committee, led it. Pastor Tyler, who was always a force for this process, became a part of it. Reverend Tyler held a series of public hearings that was insightful as to what we needed to have in the commission. I want to say and thank them for their work, which we will now evaluate today. They reviewed over 300 applications to whittle down to the commissioners that we are proposing today. What I believe is it represents Philadelphia. It has a mixture of people that reflect Philadelphia. Not just racially, not just gender-wise, but also geographically, which I am proud of, the work that the commission did. With that, I want to say thank you, a genuine thank you to those who are before us today. I said before off-camera that it was like being appointed to a four-year jury as a jurist. And I'm thankful for them taking their time, their talent, and often their treasury to be a part of this. And with that, we are in the third leg of this journey, and hopefully, the final leg will be giving them an adequate budget so that they can complete their stated mission. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your hard work and your due diligence, and all the members of council, both now and prior to this particular term. Because as you said, this has been a long journey to get to a point where we have the appropriate entity in place that will provide the appropriate citizens oversight. I want to thank everybody, and thank you all for agreeing to participate in this awesome process. We really appreciate it. At this time, I want to ask Mr. Christmas to call the first witness that would like to, that will be testifying today.
Ms. Angelica Hendricks, Chair of the Selection Panel for the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
Good morning. Just state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Council President Clark, Councilmember Jones, and members of the Philadelphia City Council. My name is Angelica Hendricks. I am a faculty member at Penn Law with the Quattrone Center for the Fair Administration of Justice, and the Chair of the Selection Panel for the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, appointed by City Council. I am joined by my colleagues, who were appointed alongside myself, to lead the application, interview, and vetting process for commissioners of Philadelphia's new independent police oversight agency. Samantha J. Williams, appointed by City Council, Vanessa Garrett Hartley, appointed by Mayor Kenny, Pastor Carl Day, appointed by Mayor Kenny, and Reverend Mark Tyler, appointed by City Council. And we are excited to support the nine resolutions on the agenda that will appoint the inaugural slate of commissioners to CPAC. Resolution Number 220, 264, appoints Afrozah Hussein for initial two-year term. Afrozah is a community activist and fundraiser focusing on reconciliation and reparations. Afrozah is also fluent in several languages, including Bengali, Hindi, Italian, and French. Resolution Number 220, 265, appoints Judge Ben Lerner for initial two-year term. Judge Lerner, whom many of you know, has a wealth of experience in policing, public defense, and criminal justice reform. Resolution Number 220, 266, appoints Hakeem P. A. for an initial two-year term. Hakeem is the youngest nominee and a recent graduate of the Philadelphia Public School System, who has spent his time in high school working to bring attention to the School of the Prison Pipeline. Resolution Number 220, 267, appoints Hassan Bennett for an initial four-year term. Hassan was wrongfully convicted due to police misconduct and was exonerated 13 years later after representing himself. Resolution Number 220, 268, appoints Jali Hatchett for an initial two-year term. Jali is a former prosecutor and the upcoming president of the Bearers Association. He currently works to address police misconduct as an attorney advisor for Septus Police Internal Affairs Department. Resolution Number 220, 269, appoints John Solomon for an initial four-year term. John is a boots-on-the-ground anti-violence activist and founder of Endangered Kind, an organization that helps local communities intervene in neighborhood violence. Resolution Number 220, 270, appoints Marielle Asaniago for initial four-year term. Marielle is an award-winning youth advocate who has spent the past 15 years developing programming related to youth and those struggling with the opioid crisis. Resolution Number 220, 271, appoints Melanie DeBose for an initial four-year term. Elder Melanie is a community activist, leader of Power Live Free, and a humanitarian working to eradicate poverty in Philadelphia. Resolution Number 220, 272, appoints Rosara Torres Thomas for an initial four-year term. Rosara is an author, a victim-witness advocate, and a survivor of police officer-involved domestic violence. It should be noted that the legislation required geographic diversity among commissioners, meaning that no two commissioners could be appointed from the same neighborhood, which is based on the police district the candidates reside. These nine nominees represent a wide array of neighborhoods throughout the city, including North Philly, West Philly, Southwest Philly, Northwest, Northeast, and Center City, representing the Ninth, Twelfth, Fourteenth, Fifteenth, Sixteenth, Nineteenth, Twenty-Fourth, Thirty-Fifth, and Thirty-Ninth police districts respectively. Before I turn it over for questions to the proposed nominees, I'd like to provide an update on the selection panel's progress to get here today. Upon drafting and posting the application, the selection panel received a total of 320 responses. And to help narrow down the applicant pool, each panelist reviewed all applications using a rubric to evaluate the applicants. Based upon, one, how their identity reflects the diversity of the city; two, their community experience in advocating for their neighbors; three, experience in navigating systemic barriers; four, experience in ensuring justice and advocating for transparency; and lastly, a commitment to bringing forth structural transformative changes. With this rubric, panelists evaluated candidates independently, meaning without comparing applicants to each other. The panel met for two hours a week for 16 weeks to discuss the applicants, which does not include the additional hours spent preparing for these meetings and doing additional cursory checks of each applicant. Altogether, I've calculated that the panelists volunteered over 120 hours of service to narrow down the applicant pool from 320 to 82 candidates. And once the candidate pool was narrowed to 82, the panel then began the process of considering the geographical limitations set out by the legislation. After reviewing all 82 applicants again, the pool was then reduced to 35 candidates that were selected for an interview. The interviews were held in early January and consisted of a panel interview setting, where the panelists from the mayor's selection and two panelists from the council's selection met with each candidate. As Chair of the panel, I facilitated every interview, amassing over 18 hours of interviews across several days. During the interviews, we asked difficult questions. We questioned the candidates regarding policing, their community involvement, and also inquired as to how well they would work alongside eight other individuals trying to achieve a shared mission. The selection panel's process, as required by the legislation, also included the hosting of a public forum for community feedback on the proposed nominees. The legislation-sponsored Councilmember Jones highlighted the importance of a community vetting process occurring even before council's own vetting process because the Citizens Police Oversight Commission is for the community. The selection panel held two virtual town halls on February 7th and March 8th, and we relied on the feedback we received from those who testified and submitted letters before finalizing our decisions and submitting nine names to Councilmember Jones. Even though our official duties may be complete once the commissioners are confirmed, the work doesn't stop there for us. We are committed to ensuring that the commissioners are properly trained and prepared to fulfill their responsibilities of the legislation. And as such, we have designed a training schedule for the commissioners, which will include a local and national overview of police oversight, listening sessions with members of the community, and conversations with relevant city agencies and stakeholders across criminal and racial justice organizations. And the first training for the commissioners is scheduled to begin the first week of May, and training will continue throughout the summer and fall. And we are also committed to ensuring that CPAC receives a budget that ensures that over a half million voters who approve the establishment of this new independent commission can adequately rely on its services and receive the long overdue oversight that this city deserves. We know many members of council are concerned about public safety and are actively considering increases to the police department's budget. We ask council to consider, can there be public safety if members of the community neither trust the police nor views policing as legitimate? When Philadelphia officers commit misconduct, it trickles into all communities, and the harm is felt by all Philadelphians. Any conversation about the increase in PPD's budget should also come with full conversation about fully funded and empowered oversight. Thank you, members of the Philadelphia City Council, for your diligence in this process. This has been almost two years in the making, and you've all remained committed to making this process happen. And thank you, Anthony Arashi, the Acting Executive Director of the Police Advisory Commission, and the dedicated staff at the PAC, who spent hours, days, and months alongside us, helping us host community town halls and providing advice and support. And thank you to Mary Horstmann of Managing Director's Office, who provided us with technical support throughout this entire process. And most importantly, the selection panel would like to thank the community for your applications, for your input in our discussions, and for uplifting your voices to champion police oversight here in Philadelphia. And that concludes my testimony, Council President. The nine nominees are here and ready to answer any questions you may have about their qualifications and interest in serving on the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony, and more importantly, thank you so much for your hard work. We really appreciate your commitment to the City of Philadelphia and this very important issue. At this point, we will open the floor from the members for the individuals that are being nominated today and likely confirmed. I do believe Councilman O. has a question. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I did look over the list, and of course, everyone seems so very well qualified. Appreciate their willingness to serve, and of course, the great work of the committee. I do have a question, however. Among the original nine that were announced was Dr. Alan Wong, and I have received a letter from an association. They are wondering, as is Dr. Wong, who has contacted me, what is the reason that he was removed from the original nine?
Sure, that's a great question. If I can have my colleague Samantha Williams answer that question. Thank you, Councilmember O.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angelica, and thank you, Councilmember O, for the question. As you know, and as Ms. Hendricks just stated, the legislation required us to host a public forum in which we actually received community feedback on our proposed nominees. In advance of that forum and at that forum, we did receive feedback from the community about Mr. Wong in particular. There, in particular, was a social media post that we found to be troubling. We did give Mr. Wong an opportunity after the town hall to interview with us and to provide an explanation. And upon further review, the panelists decided not to move forward with his nomination. We did explain our decision to Mr. Wong after we decided.
That is in the realm of the selection committee, so I cannot argue about that. I can argue, however, that I did see the three documents, two of which were not authored by him and seemed to be irrelevant. Those were authored by the Chair of the Police Asian American Advisory Committee, that is, Mr. Kwong Mac, and seemed to more have to do with just internal issues. The third document was a screenshot of a social media post in Chinese that he forwarded, stating that basically it's not, this is a post from somebody else. And that was not authored by him either. I do understand that a person came forward and said he was insensitive, at least insensitive, and raised the issue of him being discriminatory, which certainly that does not come from those three documents, nor his reputation in the community, nor any of his activities. I think the problem that I have with that is when you open up a public process and someone comes in and makes a smear against someone's reputation and character, they need to back that up with something more than what I've seen. I do understand that it's not simply those things, and I don't want to argue with the selection committee, very reputable people, many people that I admire. I do want to say, however, that I have seen those documents, and I think, without some explanation, a good person's reputation is malign, and I don't think that should be the case. However, that being said, you know, I appreciate the explanation, and I will move on from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we proceed with questions, the Chair wanted, I think, Councilwoman Brooks is now present. Councilwoman? Just for the record.
Thank you, Council President. I think I missed roll call, so I just wanted to make sure.
Make sure you're present.
Yes.
All right, for the record. Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to state that the issue about Mr. Wong was brought up to me, and I discussed it with Member O., who presented his opinion about how this process went. And what I want for folk to know, this was not a referendum, public referendum of the candidate, but it is a vetting process that what we wanted to do was to make sure that, out of the 300 interviews plus, that we were able to come up with a number of folk that we could definitely get through this part of the process. So I have agreed to meet with Mr. Wong to talk about those particular issues, but the imperfect shouldn't be the enemy of the good, and we did find some candidates today that we would like to move forward, that we do feel totally confident of, but again, this was not to malign that candidate. It was designed to come up with consensus candidates, geographically balanced candidates, that we could move forward today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other questions for this particular witness or members at a committee? I don't see any. Well, thank you. For the record, we have received written testimony by a Leo Muldahill Jr. and a Carrie Given. Those will be placed into the record for this particular hearing. I don't see any other questions. Are there any other questions? The Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your indulgence. I was fascinated about this committee's willingness to be trained. And I would like to take a deeper dive into some of the aspects of that proposed training. I believe sincerely that oversight without insight is short-sighted, and I am truly thankful to them for their willingness to take a deeper dive into the operations of what it takes to be a police officer, what some of the rules and guides are. And could you kind of tell us what type of training we can look forward to them participating in?
Sure, that's a great question, Councilmember Jones. So a few of us have been meeting to discuss what type of training is necessary for commissioners. And right now, we have some guidance that will be about a five or six-part series for training, with the first asking the most important question of what is police oversight? And what are the requirements found within the legislation? And some of the duties that these commissioners will have to conduct once they are confirmed. So the initial training will hopefully include an extensive training of what is police oversight? What is contained within the police department's rules and directives, their standard operating procedures? And so we're hoping for the first training session to be led by predominantly the staff of PAC, who have an extensive experience relating to reviewing those procedures, drafting more equitable procedures for the department. And so, once the commissioners are trained by the PAC staff, as well as some national training as well, with the assistance of... as well as some national training as well, with the assistance of Samantha Williams and myself, we're hoping to also include other city agencies that address policing within the training, such as Philadelphia Police Department, the Law Department, as well the Public Safety Committee, as well as agencies within the Managing Director's Office that deals with social services. Since social services are, you know, primary for this region is understanding what alternatives are there. And as well as including other trainings relating to partnerships with stakeholders. Some stakeholders, including the Defender Association, or the District Attorney's Office, Power Live Free, and also some community organizations as well, community partners. Philadelphia is filled with several grassroots organizations that seek to uplift and address policing, and we always want to include them within this training agenda and invite them to meet the commissioners. And so, yeah, we right now have a five-to-six-stage training process that will really address policing oversight primarily within Philadelphia, but also making sure the commissioners are aware of their national stakeholders as well.
So many of my colleagues have joined me in visiting the police academy. And there is even a civilian training component. It isn't as rigorous as some of the police training up there physically, but it also goes into what some of the norms, operating standards are. And I'm thankful again to my colleagues, and the police commissioner, who post George Floyd didn't wait until this commission came to be to start changing some of the rules, like chokeholds and things like that. That I think it's important that commissioners understand what is allowable in the continuum of use of force and what is not. And so for them to understand that when somebody crosses the line, you know, to be able to know where that line is, I think is essential. And so again, I thank them for taking on the task of being trained. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilman. Thank you for that explanation and that point of information as it relates to the process. Do we have any additional questions from members of the panel or witnesses, members of the committee? They're seeing none.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Oh, we did have Sherri Cohen for public comment. That was our only public comment. Right, no, we tried to reach her by phone, and it went to voicemail. And I'm just going to check with Modesto. Is that the case? And if so, that's our only witness. We can move on to what's next on the agenda.
Not clear. Is she on? You're not clear what you just said. She's not on.
No, she's not. She's not on. We weren't able to reach her, so we can move forward.
Yeah, and I just saw a hand raise. Got these numbers on my screen. All right.
Mr. President, I apologize. I apologize. That was me. But while I'm on, I do want to thank Councilman Jones for his steadfast work on this issue and for bringing forth a fantastic group that's going to really help move this agenda, this conversation, forward in a significant way. So, you know, I just really wanted to say that and thank you to those who are willing to serve, because this is going to be work, it's going to be hard work, and, you know, people are looking for outcomes. So, thank you to all.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's just probably an understatement.
Yes.
Sometimes people say, be careful what you wish for, but we really appreciate what you.
Yeah, we don't want to scare them off, but.
Well, it's too late now. It's too late, Councilwoman. You're in the process now. They can't go.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. All right, well, again, thank you all for your willingness to serve. We really appreciate all the work that all of you have done leading up and then as we move forward in this very, very significant process. And Councilmember Jones, thank you, as always, for your strong commitment to all sides of the public safety issue. So, so important. So there being no further questions from members of the committee and no other witnesses to testify or ask if there is anyone else present in the hearing whose name we have failed to call wishing to offer testimony on the resolution being considered today. Boom, hearing none. I want to thank all the witnesses for their participation today. We value your opinion. Now, may all witnesses please disconnect from the hearing before we go into our public meeting. We will now pause the proceeding briefly as multiple participants leave the hearing. Thank you all very much, and we will see you guys later. Modesto, let me know when we're ready to proceed.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is Reverend Tyler. I just want to get clarification. Is the selection panel logging off now as well?
No, we just didn't want, what we didn't want to do is have a lot of people in the midst of the next part disconnecting because it does register.
Thank you.
Councilman Jones, that's fine. You can stay on. Hold on to it. See that.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We are ready to proceed, Council President.
Good. Okay, thank you very much. We will now go into our public meeting to consider the action to be taken on the resolutions before the committee today. We will now convene the public meeting. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the roll to take attendance? Members that are in attendance, please indicate that you are present when your name is called. Also, just to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Christmas, call the roll.
Council Lady Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I am present.
Council Lady Brooks?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I'm present.
Councilman Dom? Council Lady Godia?
Good morning, present.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson? Councilman Green? Council Lady Gimm?
Present.
Sorry, I'm also present.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Councilman Johnson? Councilman Jones?
Present.
Councilman O.? Councilman O'Neil? Council Lady Parker?
Present.
Council Lady Caniona Sanchez?
I am present. Thank you.
Councilman Squilla? Councilman Thomas?
I'm present.
Council President Clark?
Present.
We have a call, Council President.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
We will now go into our public meeting. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for motion on Resolution Number 220264, 220265, 220266, 220267, 220268, 220269, 220270, 220271, and 220272.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolutions Number 220264, 220265, 220266, 220267, 220268, 220269, 220270, 220271, and 220272 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation.
Do I get a second?
Yeah, second.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second at the Resolution Number 220264, 220265, 220266, 220267, 220268, 220269, 220270, 220271, and 220272 be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation. All in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, and Resolution Number 220264, 220265, 220266, 220267, 220268, 220269, 220270, 220271, and 220272 will be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation. This concludes the business for today. Thank you all very much for your support and your attendance. Thank you all.
Thank you, press. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jones.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, man.